Good morning, it's nine AM and I now call this Ordinary Council meeting on the twenty fourth of September two thousand and twenty open. I'll first call attendants and I can see that everyone is in attendance, good morning. Now go to the acknowledgement of country, councillor LeCunzlein.
Ipswich City Council respectfully acknowledges the traditional owners as custodians of the land upon which we meet. We pay our respects to their elders past present and emerging as a keeper of the traditions cultures and stories of a proud people.
Thank you councillor LeCunzlein. And I move to the upholding Craig, councillor Ireland.
Thank you ma'am. Heavenly Father, we seek you to be with us in this meeting today. Assist us to be an example to others, bringing strength and encouragement in whatever we do, and equip us for the ongoing challenges as they arise. Give us the guidance to continue to make wise decisions for both the short and long term benefit of our city and our community. Regardless, however difficult and unpopular some will be, we ask this in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. Thank you councillor Ireland. And now move on to apologies and leave of absence, I have no apologies and no leave of absence. Number five is condolences, I have no condolences. Next is tributes, I have no tributes. Seven, presentation of petitions, there are no petitions before us. Eight, presentations and deputations, there are none, I guess while Covid's still going, we'll probably see that continue. Nine, public participation, I haven't had anyone come to us with anything. So I go straight on to ten, which are declarations of interest in matters on the agenda. Are there any declarations of interest that anyone would like to declare? Councillor Tully?
Thanks mayor, I'd just like to clarify through you to the CEO, the declaration that I made in respect of the meeting, the Growth Infrastructure and Waste Committee report, and that that committee was acting under delegation, I believe this report is just to receive a note, there's no substantive decision being made and there's no requirement to make a declaration.
That's correct councillor Tully.
Yeah, thank you.
But thank you for that clarification, I think it's important to make.
And thank you too.
Councillor Ireland? One too please. In accordance with section one seven five E of the Local Government Act two thousand and nine, I declare that I have a perceived conflict of interest in item two of the Governance and Transparency Committee titled Acquisition of Drainage Easement for INF two four oh five Local Drainage Rehabilitation Project at North Station Road, North Bevel. The nature of the interest is that the property owner is a lifelong family friend and there would be a perceived conflict of interest. I propose to voluntarily exclude myself from this meeting during the discussion of this item.
Thank you very much for that councillor Ireland. Any other declarations of interest, yes councillor LeCunzlein?
In accordance with section one seventy five E of the Local Government Act, I informed the meeting that I could or reasonably expected to have an interest in item two entitled Acquisition of Drainage Easement for INF oh two four oh five. The nature of this property is that the owner is a the owners, sorry, are friends and I have frequent contact with them.
Thank you very much.
And I propose to remove myself.
Thank you very much councillor LeCunzlein. Do you have any other? Councillor Fickner?
In accordance with section one seven five C two of the Local Government Act two thousand and nine, I declare that I have a material personal interest in item number fourteen point six entitled Ipswich Central Redevelopment Committee's report. Because of my business interest in Barheys and Vogge Proprietary Limited located at the top of town in the CBD. I plan on dealing with this by leaving the meeting while the matter is discussed and voted on.
Thank you very much councillor Fickner. Councillor Madsen?
In accordance with section one hundred and seventy five E of the Local Government Act two thousand and nine, I declare that I have or may have a conflict of interest in item fourteen point six titled Ipswich Central Redevelopment Committee. As I'm a member of the executive of the Ipswich Trades Hall and Labour Day Committee and our building is immediately adjacent to a number of projects that are discussed in that committee. I propose to deal with this matter by leaving the meeting room while the matter is discussed and voted on.
Thank you very much, appreciate that. Any more? Thank you very much. I'll move on now to a change to order of business. And that the order of business be altered to allow the consideration of item fifteen point one to be dealt with now. May I have a sec, a procedural motion to bring item fifteen point one to the front now? Do I have any, I'll do a vote for that, all those in favour? That is unanimous, thank you. So in relation to the matter regarding the appointment of deputy mayor, I'm really pleased to share that we no longer are required to consider that matter. I think it's important to put the matter to rest and to just say to our community that we are a learning council. We are genuine representation of the community in that before being elected, we were just like you. We were small business owners, we were workers, we were mothers and fathers and grandparents and very passionate about our community. And we're still all of those things and we are still learning. As a council, we share a vision to rebuild a strong and trusted council and we'll continue to work every day to do that. We won't always be perfect, but we will be honest. We're not going to get it one hundred percent right one hundred percent of the time, but we'll work every day to improve this city and this council. I would like to take this opportunity to thank councillor Doyle and the deputy mayor for her contribution as she has made as a councillor and as a leader of this organisation over the past five months. And I'm very much looking forward to continuing to work together along with the councillors to keep delivering outcomes for the people of Ipswich. With that, I'd like to move on to the next agenda item. So I move a procedural motion that we not consider motion fifteen point one, those in favour, please put your hand up. It's unanimous, thank you very much. We now move on to confirmation of the minutes, item eleven. So you've all been given a copy of the minutes. May I have someone to move them please? Councillor Fickner, thank you very much. A seconder? Councillor Milligan, thank you very much. I now leave it open for discussion, correction. They're being done, I'll put that to the vote, those in favour, please raise your hand. Thank you very much, it's unanimous. We do not have a mayoral minute. And we don't have any business outstanding with matters lying on the table to be dealt with, so we'll go to item number fourteen, which is the Growth Infrastructure and Waste Committee on that. And we're just noting because that that meeting does have full delegation. So may I please have someone who will move that report? Thank you councillor Fickner. A seconder? Thank you councillor Madsen. I'll now leave that open for, we'd like to ask any questions on that report, discussions. No, I'll move that to the vote, those in favour, please raise your hand, thank you, it's unanimous. We'll now move on to the Governance and Transparency Committee. I'll hand over to, I guess I'll ask the chair of that committee with how you'd like that particular one to be run, noting the declarations of interest that we've had put forward as well as.
Yes, so we've had some declarations of interest on item two of last week's Governance and Transparency Committee. I believe item one, the matter involving the tennis court lease in Springfield Central is a matter that would be good to discuss again today. We could seek to move the rest of the items together.
I think councillor Madsen will have to do two out separately and ask, did your councillors have any comments?
Yeah, I'm happy to do that.
If that's okay?
Yep, I would just add that items three and four, well, item three on the agenda last week was about some grounds maintenance and services contracts involving peak season grass and there's some good outcomes being pursued by council. And item four was the organisational structure that was noted. And following on from that last week, a matter arising was a motion was moved that a report be prepared on the organisational structure, specifically on workplace culture, including the result of the core poll survey and whistleblow provisions.
So I take it that you're moving that items, I guess three, four and five be moved, be batched, would that be correct?
That'd be correct.
Do I have a seconder for that?
One second.
Councillor LeCunzlein, thank you very much. Those in favour, please raise your hand. I see it's unanimous, thank you very much. We'll then move on to that item one, which is the new lease of a Springfield Central Sports Complex, forty four Sports Drive at Springfield. This is looking at the Footback Council to enter into a lease with Baseline Tennis Coaching Proprietary Limited. May I ask the relevant council officer to come to the lectern now?
Good morning, Mayor and councillors, Brett McGrath, Property Services Manager.
Thank you. Mr McGrath, I know you're speaking with the council division two, that there's a lot of interest in the community in this particular lease, could you please explain how it's working, how it'll be different from going forward in the future?
Yeah, so we went to an expression of interest and baseline tennis were the successful tenderer there. So they're going to be operating on more of a commercial basis where it's going to be they're paying rent for a five year term and they're going to be providing training programmes and the like, so it's not going to be just opened up to the community, but the community will still be able to hire the tennis court for a fee. And I believe that's about fourteen dollars an hour.
Fourteen dollars an hour.
Yep. So, yeah. And there's a lot of programmes that they've got in place with Tennis Queensland, also the Australian Tennis Association as well, and they run a lot of programmes with schools in the area as well, so, yeah, there's still a lot of community involvement.
Are there any other questions? Do you see any other questions, I know we've discussed, well, we discussed the sports, I don't know, councillor John, if you had any questions on the on the sports complex?
No, I'm just happy that the tender obviously went to like a local business. And I know that they have had experience doing tennis clinics and stuff in particular schools around our area as well in the past.
Yes, yes, I believe they're an established business already in Brookwater, so yeah, definitely a local business, that's.
Thank you, Mr McGrath.
Thank you.
May I ask Mr Stewart to come down?
Don Stewart, manager of community and cultural services.
Thank you. Just, I guess within the, now that we have these great facilities that have been put out there, and I know that a number of schools have got permits, but those new facilities, how do people access them?
The entire Springfield Sports Complex went out to E O Y back in two thousand and eighteen. The successful clubs were selected or the associations were selected based on the strength of their E O Ys, their sport, their membership count, and they were advised accordingly. Their permits then are submitted on a seasonal basis, be it summer or winter, for the exclusive days, afternoons, times and the weekend sports days. Outside of those hours, they are available for casual permit hire or general public use when no one is on the field. But obviously during a permit being issued, that is exclusive use of the club at the time.
At the moment, you're on the website, can you see a schedule of when things are available or not?
No, Park Search allows you to identify the available parks within the Ipswich area. An application then submitted, it is then assessed by the sport and recreation team with regards to availability. And obviously it's a massive puzzle during summer and winter trying to fit fields for the teams, but also to allow for maintenance, repair and just general rehab of the field.
And what about schools, how would schools get access to?
Schools can also apply for their casual use permits. And a lot of the schools do that for things like their cross-country, their athletics days or some intraschool sport. They will do that during school hours or at times when the fields are available and not under permit to the other clubs.
Just a question as well, I know there's a lot of interest around the Springfield Central Sports Hall, so I'm wondering where we're at in relation to that lease.
We are currently talking to Y Care, who are the successful operators of the community centre. We are able to allocate the under licence, the sports hall component of the facility and to Y Care as an operator for that facility on a community basis, obviously, so that we'll be able to open that up to various teams that may wish to play indoor sports like basketball, footsball, volleyball, et cetera, et cetera. Again, outside of those agreed school hours that Springfield Central High School have already have over the hall itself.
Thank you. Any other questions, Mr Stewart? Thank you very much, Mr Stewart, I appreciate that. Oh, I've not for any discussion, any points, discussion points? Yes, Mr Tully.
Thank you, I think this is a very important decision.
My apologies, I've done a procedural error, but before we get a discussion, I have to call for a move in a seconder.
I'll move it.
Councillor Tully, thank you very much, and a seconder.
Yeah.
Thank you.
This is a key and an important decision for the eastern suburbs, this sports, the entire sports complex is fantastically positioned to a community just in that greater Springfield area of ultimately eighty six thousand people. I am very pleased, as my divisional colleague said, that the tender, as I'll call it, or the lease, but baseline tennis coaching is going to a local business with established roots in the Ipswich community, it has the experience. I guess there's only one downside with, through this process, is that the public has had free use of these facilities for a while. And that may create some difficulties over the next few weeks when it does have to be booked and paid for. But that's an opportunity that did arise, I guess unexpectedly in a way, hopefully the community will understand, but I would hope that tennis starts to play a much bigger role in our community, right throughout the city, but of course in my beloved eastern suburbs.
Thank you, and yes, I think you make a point that it's been free for a year now. And I know that councillor Tully, you were speaking with council officers previously about making sure there's proper signage up there for residents as well.
Yes, I might just add that, that I think some signage now, now that we're transitioning into a paid arrangement, that it just indicates that that was on, we'd just be upfront with people, that was on an unpaid basis and this will now enable a fair and equitable use of the of the facility by everyone in the community, schools, individuals, family groups and others who get together.
I think Mr Stewart's left, I was going to ask him if he was, oh, he's here. Thank you, Mr Stewart, welcome back. Will there be signage going up at the tennis courts at all about the train?
Yes, a full communication and engagement plan has been drafted and issued to councillors Tully and Johnic for reference, but we'll be putting up signs. I approved the signs this last Thursday for printing and they'll be hung along with additional social media campaign as well.
Wonderful, thank you, Mr Stewart.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? And councillor Madsen, you're a keen tennis player, trying this out?
I would just add that I think it was, said that it was about fourteen dollars for hire, that's pretty competitive in the modern world of tennis and yeah, it's a good rate.
Thank you. And I believe the basin will also be offering coaching services, Pro Shop and a whole of other things to each, I think would be really great for the community as well. If there's another discussion, I'll put this to the vote, all those in favour of the recommendations, please raise your hand, it's unanimous, thank you. Now that we're going on to item two, I'll ask councillor LeCunzlein and councillor Ireland to lead. Thank you very much, we'll now move on to item two, which is the acquisition of drainage easement for local drainage rehabilitation project, North Station Road, North Ipswich, may I have a mover please? Thank you councillor Milligan. And a second, councillor Madsen, thank you very much. Are there any questions we have of council offices in this, no, any discussion? Like I said, it's important, I think it's really great to see the council officers being proactive in looking at drainage, especially in North Bevel, especially this coming storm season, so I'll put that straight to the vote, those in favour, please raise your hand, it's unanimous, thank you. We'll now call for councillor LeCunzlein and councillor Ireland to come back please. I probably didn't get a chance to even sit down out there. Thank you, we now move on to the Community Culture Arts and Sports Committee and I'll hand over to the chair, councillor Fickner, just if you have a report or a moving.
Thanks mayor, I'd like to move that we accept the recommendations of items one, three and four.
One, three and four.
Contained in the Community Culture Arts and Sports Committee report and that we discuss items number two, five and six further.
So we'll discuss items two, five and six, thank you. So you've moved that we batch one, three and four together, may I have a second?
That is correct.
May I have a seconder?
One seconder.
Thank you councillor LeCunzlein, thank you. Those in favour, please raise your hand. Thank you, it's passed, it's unanimous, thank you. We now move on to the Community Culture Arts and Sports Committee, item number two, which is the Ipswich Australia Day Award Selection Panel, so awards and selection panel, may I have a mover please? Councillor Fickner and councillor LeCunzlein, a seconder, thank you. I now leave it open to discussion.
So, through you mayor. I just brought this to the attention of full council so that we have visibility and transparency on this particular matter, it's import, it was important to us, that committee last week, that we have a selection panel that didn't include the mayor or councillors, but that we help piece together the committee that will be this selection panel for the Australia Day Awards. And I just wanted to know if there were any other points of discussion with the wider council outside of our committee, if there are any objections to that or if anyone had any further ideas as to how that, they might see that running. But we thought that it would be prudent for us not to have any visibility over the listing of the finalists or the selection of the winners indeed at the Australia Day Awards.
Thank you, and thank you councillor Fickner for shepherding that to make sure that it's an open transparent process. That's, that's open for the heroes of Ipswich to shine. If there's any other discussion, I'll put that to the vote, those in favour? Thank you, it's unanimous. We'll now move on to. We'll now move on to item five of that committee, which is the Rosewood Community Centre, may I have a mover please? Council Quinselman, thank you, and a second, Council Fekna, thank you very much. Now I'll leave that open to discussion. Council Quinselman.
Uh Chair, councillor is committed to the continuation of the Rosewood Community Centre and its ongoing service delivery. Excuse me, this commitment is also carried by Council Milligan and myself as the Division Four councillors. This is a question about the facilities and infrastructure of the centre, not the continuation of the centre itself. The Rosewood Community Centre continues to provide high value services and is a meeting place for multiple local interests. We are seeking solutions to an accommodation need to deal with the aging condition of this facility in the context of the continued population growth and demand for community services in this area.
Thank you, Council Quinselman. Any other discussion? Council William?
Uh Mayor, I'd just like to support uh Council Quinselman's statements, uh basically in layman's terms. The organisation that operates there provides excellent service to the community and with the prospect of the increase in population in that area of the, the city. Uh we need to be proactive and, and look forward to uh being able to deliver that.
I can go, I noticed in the, in the report that we had, I think which we're going to redact out and, 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 and publish, but there's some interesting data, I think that in two thousand and eighteen, Rosewood, the statistical area at Rosewood had over twelve and a half thousand people. And the ABS is saying that by twenty forty-one, they'll have over fifty-five thousand people living in beautiful Rosewood. So that was very interesting. Any other discussion? In that case, I'll put that on to the vote, those in favour, please raise your hand, it's unanimous, thank you. We now move on to the twenty twenty Christmas in Ipswich Programme, may I have a mover please? Council Fekna, thank you, and a second, uh thank you, Council Doyle. Now open it up for discussion. Council Fekna.
Um I bring this to the attention of full council um to uh clear up a couple of things um and, and highlight a couple of the wonderful things that will be happening um in Ipswich um this festive season. So the, the events team have been working very hard uh to piece together a Christmas programme that's celebratory but also Covid-safe. And I acknowledge how difficult that can actually be. Um you know, I'm sure that everyone here has read the report and they've seen that we've got the lights in the Narromah Gardens, Santa will be getting around on the bus, there's Christmas carols. So it, it's very much a time for us to come together. Um and after the tumultuous year that a lot of us have had, I think that it's important that Ipswich City Council does provide something uh, you know, uh something special for us at Christmas time. So I just want to thank the council officers involved um in putting together um this wonderful programme of Christmas events and acknowledge the creativity that they had to display to make sure that they were Covid-safe events um and that we had a chance to celebrate at the end of this year. Um one of my recommendations was to consider the ticketing cost for the Winter Wonderland. Um so the proceeds of that will be going to charity. Um but at committee last week, um I wasn't prepared to uh commit to a price. Uh the recommendation there reads that uh we would bring it to a workshop for further consideration. However, I'm prepared to amend that uh recommendation um and resolve uh the ticket price uh here today so that the team can move on, uh if, if the full council is prepared to have that, that particular discussion about the ticket price um of the Winter Wonderland uh, uh Christmas Wonderland rather, at the Narromah Gardens. Uh we discussed at committee last week that there needs to be a ticket price um to have value so that there were, you know, so that there weren't going to be dropouts. Um Council Officer, uh Joe Jordan, last week explained to us that if the ticket were to be free, uh you could have up to forty percent dropout and that's not the point. We want to see people out in the city, we want to see people celebrating together. Uh so we need to put a value on that particular ticket. Uh but it also needs to be fair and, and reflective of the families um that will want to be in attendance this year. Uh there was a discussion around a five dollar per person and an either fifteen or twenty dollar ticket for family, um which would be up to five people. Uh so that's where we landed. So I guess we were pretty, uh we were pretty adamant about the five dollar per person. Um however, we didn't know the, the price for the family ticket. And just noting that we want to uh make sure that that family ticket was up to five people. So that was a fifteen or twenty dollar consideration. Uh I'm, I, I guess I seek um the advice of my fellow councillors on this to see what they thought would be fair.
Uh but, um through the Chair, I, I think the pricing um that Council Fekna ha- has outlined and has been discussed during the committee um seems to be um, I guess reasonably um fair and equitable for, for most families. I just um had um raised the um possibility of identifying potentially one or two nights across the programme where traditionally there was low attendance, it, it may be, you know, midweek or whatever, and um offering those particular nights free, excuse me, to local families. Um, just an idea.
Yes, this is something I think we've been gnashing our teeth at because um, just going back to the report, last year, the uh Christmas Wonderland in Narromah Gardens had uh over twenty-seven thousand visitors, over, over ten nights and obviously a free entry, but with, with Covid, we, we will only be able to take about eight thousand. So it's, yeah, basically, I, I guess a third or less than last time, and I'm getting a nod from the council officer at the back there. So we're trying to work out, we, we don't want to waste a single ticket, since not everyone can go, and how do we do that? I'm also quite surprised when council officers let us know that from other events and, and from previous history that if there is no price to a ticket, that you often have up to a forty percent dropout rate. And the, and the thought of families missing out is something that we've, we've, I guess, gnashed our teeth on. I know myself, I was a single mother for many years, so I know that every dollar counts. And when you hear that it's five dollars per, per person and I think the original report had fifteen dollars for a family and I take on board what you're looking at with the twenty dollars per family. And we raised that, I think, last week. Um and I did ask at that committee if anyone would like to say anything, to, to give feedback. I've received zero feedback from the community on that particular pricing. Because, you know, I've been a bit worried about making sure that it's open to, to everyone.
Yep.
And then that was raised too, I know Deputy Mayor, you talked about lower attendance nights, I don't know if we'll have any, but also we talked about how we have nights that are a bit more disabled friendly as well, or family friendly with prams and volunteers or people with walkers, I go, that's, I'm getting some nods from the council officer. May I ask the council officer to come forward? Thank you.
Good morning, Carly Gregory, Manager of Marketing and Promotions Branch.
Thank you. What kind of, just leading off what Deputy Mayor said, but leading on, what kind of options can we have if we're looking um, would there be lower attendance nights?
There, there was really, yeah, no lower attendance nights. So for us, it's really, you know, thousands of people through every night last year. And we would have thought that, you know, there would be lower attendance nights midweek, but actually what tended to happen was families would often try to come midweek thinking that the weekends would be busy um or bringing, you know, elderly relatives and that kind of thing. Um so it is quite difficult, given that we've probably got a third of the attendees this year available to come, you know, um compared to last year. So I think that would be very difficult to guarantee that. We did talk about though, on the preview night, having different sessions and allowing different community groups, volunteers, um maybe people with disabilities approaching those kind of groups in the community so that we can accommodate uh longer viewing times um with potentially additional volun- volunteers to assist those people to get around Wonderland. So that would be, I think, you know, the most relevant way that we can assist those kind of groups.
Council Fekna.
Uh when it comes to the family ticket price for up to five people, in your opinion, um are you wedded either way as to the fifteen to twenty dollar price?
We're not wedded either way, we'll.
Do you think it'll make a difference?
Um look, I think price is, is, you know, always something that will make a difference to, to certain groups. So I think we need to be mindful of that. We felt though, compared to other activities, you know, whether you're going to the movies or, you know, um even things that they have like at the Tivoli Drive-In that are considered low cost, we felt that fifteen or twenty dollars was still incredibly cost-effective um at that time of year. So, you know, we're happy to take your guidance on this, we're not wedded to either price, so fifteen or twenty would be fine, I think.
What is the cost of the car, the Tivoli for a family?
Uh we did, the team did, did um look this up, I don't off the top of my head, but I, I'm pretty sure that this was well in line with that. I think it was still around the fo- forty dollar mark, I think, so.
I think it's, I think it's twelve.
A whole thing? And I noticed that this is um over twelve nights too instead of the ten.
The ten, yeah.
So if we did a preview, would be on top of that twelve?
Correct, that's the thirteenth night.
Okay.
Yes.
Um knowing that every ticket is going to be precious, almost like the, the Willy Wonka.
Yeah, absolutely, the golden ticket.
Um if someone purchase, purchases a ticket, is it easy for them, can they just give it to a friend if they can't go, or how would, how would that work?
Uh well, they'll be in people's names, so we'll be scanning those. So obviously part of the Covid-safe plan is knowing who's got the ticket and then trying to identify family groups and those kind of things. So we need to be responsible in that manner, yes.
So would there be a way for people to transfer it or put their ticket back in or?
Um they could certainly get a refund, so we have to make that available, so that would be great. And we have uh tried to select options in a ticketing system that would allow us to have a waitlist. So that if people did cancel their ticket, we've got a waitlist there and we can quite quickly um reallocate those numbers so that we don't waste any of the tickets to those events.
And I notice that one hundred percent of the money collected
Yes.
is looking to go to charities.
Absolutely.
Do you mind explaining how that's going to look?
Yeah, we, we really felt um that, you know, we didn't want the money to stay with council and that given it's been such a challenging year for many charities across the city who were restricted in their fundraising opportunities this year due to Covid, it would be a great opportunity to take a donation and allocate that out. So we would like to run an expressions of interest, um you know, um program that would see who's, who's available. Uh we need assistance with volunteers, so we would be looking to partner with some charities that can provide us with um those kind of volunteers and support. Um and you have a really clear criteria to that, launch it shortly and um, you know, get a number of charities on board. We want it to be worth their while, we wouldn't like to choose fifteen charities, it would be a very small group so that they were, you know, able to benefit from the money that we're collecting.
Council Fekna.
Just a question about the logistics of the ticket sales. Uh if, if I were a group of four and the ticket price were fifteen uh for a family, um I'd, I'd probably purchase the, the family ticket. Um is that automatically associated with the number five or will you have the number of people within?
We have actually with our, with our ticket providers, just finished an additional briefing note for the mayor and councillors this morning.
Okay.
Uh where the ticketing provider, the other option would be to split the price and have a family of four for fifteen and a family of five for twenty, say, so that we're not wasting any of those tickets that people would select the number that they require. So that is an option. Um we apologize it took a few days, but it, it is challenging to find, to find, to find a provider that can do all of this with literally a hundred allocations of, you know, sessions to Wonderland.
Okay, so we could do, so there's two family tickets?
You could split it.
Yeah.
Is that what you're saying?
That, that was one of our recommendations after the discussion last week that we've come back with. So we could, could do that, not wasting tickets.
Great. No further questions.
Council Madson?
Should we have any um interesting weather events like heavy rain, hail, you know, whatever Queensland throws at us? Would there be provision for refunds or?
There, there's always a provision for refunds, absolutely. And the challenge, I suppose, with an outdoor event like Wonderland is last year we were very lucky, we had no weather events that threatened the event. In twenty eighteen, we absolutely had two or three nights that, you know, from inclement weather, we had to cancel. So people would be entitled to a refund. We can't guarantee though that we could put them into a different session, given the popularity.
Yeah, I understand.
But absolutely entitled to a refund, no questions asked.
Council Tully.
Yeah, um do you have a ballpark or approximate figure of the amount that could be distributed to a charitable organisation?
Yes, and that would obviously depend on the ticketing price and I was guessing if it's individual tickets. So we've got, we've got a range, um we think it's somewhere in the vicinity of around five to eight thousand dollars that we could collect, depending um on that for, for a select group of charities.
No more questions? No, but um I think on behalf of the council, your, your team and Joe have done a tremendous job. I can't wait till this is launched, everyone will see the tremendous program, the C- Covid-safe program. And again, um a few new things from last year as well.
It is, we're always adding, thank you very much.
Other option for discussion, Council?
Um just noting um Miss Gregory's comments about the briefing note that was prepared for council. Um if uh, if there's more information to be provided to us, um I will, I will still move my original recommendation from last week um because it, it appears that more information will come to us and we'll have a better opportunity.
I guess, I guess what we're, we're looking at now, I guess, when we go to that workshop or unless we want to discuss it here, is five dollars per person. Uh I guess there'll be, I'll call it family one, what do you call it, is, is a family of four for fifteen dollars and a family of five for, for twenty dollars is probably what we're, is that what the briefing notes putting, putting forward? Um I'm comfortable putting a variation if there's a, a.
Yeah, I'm happy to vary that, if, if Miss Gregory's happy for us to do so, then I'm more than happy to.
I guess I'll ask, like, see, it was, is it other area, other things for the ticket price that we should be aware of?
Well, I need to change my glasses to save the uh, that's okay?
I just know as soon as I get the decision, the sooner that you can
Yeah.
Yep.
Get going.
So, so if we just sort of variation would be that uh we get rid of going to local charities selected through an expressive interest and that ticket pricing be?
Instead of te- pricing options, go to a further workshop?
Yeah, instead of, that goes out, is that correct?
That's what I'm saying, so that leave the, the charity part in.
Yeah.
But we'll, we'll actually put a price in there, so five dollars per person. And a fe- family one, whatever you go, whatever you want to call it, is, is a family of four for fifteen and a family of five for twenty. For the Christmas Wonderland.
Did you say five dollars each as well?
Yes, five dollars for any digital, yeah.
Single ticket.
Single ticket, yeah.
Beautiful.
I can sort of put forward that, that all of that money will be going to charity. And the main reason for doing this is because of the reduced numbers, we want to make sure that we have as many people, as about eight thousand people get through.
Um and just to clarify and um staff can, can confirm this, that the variation between the, the income that you would receive and uh the amount that would be going to charity would be the ticketing fees, that there would be some third party ticketing fee. So that's why when you do the maths, it doesn't quite.
That's that fifty cents or something they take, is what you're saying?
Oh, it's more than fifty cents, yeah, yeah.
Okay.
So the net, the after, after fees gets to.
The net. Okay.
And uh mover and second?
Yes, so the, the mover was Council.
So Doyle, so they need to agree to a variation.
Council, yeah, Council Fekna. So my, my special's finished, um I'll just check, uh Council Fekna, you moved this, are you okay with this?
Yeah, that's fine, that's great.
Uh Deputy Mayor, are you all okay?
Yeah, agree.
Yep. Thank you.
Uh to the Mayor, are we just moving recommendation A?
I was going to do all, all three, but um I can do A.
Oh, that's fine, I'm, I'm not wedded either way, just being aware what I'm voting for.
Yep. So unless there are any objections, I would move all, I guess, uh recommendations A, B and, and C, including that, that variation. Okay, so I'll put that to the vote, those in.
Excuse me.
Oh, sorry, yes.
Oh, yeah, um are we still in debate?
Oh, yeah, oh, well, I was about to go to the vote, so.
Yeah, no, um I, I think the wording, and I, I'd, I'd ask if the mover and second would consider uh that in A um and B, um it's a reference to a singular charity and with that amount of five to eight thousand, uh it may be that the consideration was that two or even more charities might benefit in a way. I wonder if they'd be prepared to accept uh a change to A and B to read to a local charity or charities?
Oh, that's, that's a very good point, Council Tully, so for A and B, there's the word charity because they're local charities. I'll just check um with Council Fekna and Council Doyle, are you okay with
Yeah, great, thank you, Council Tully.
the variation to say to local charities? And also A, B, the agreement to with selected charities?
Or, or chari- to read charity or charities, so it doesn't have to be more than one, but it, but it could be.
Charities. Charities, I think, covers one or, or more.
Thank you.
Yep, so Council Fekna, you're okay with that?
Great.
Council Doyle?
Yep.
I'll just, any other discussion? No, I'll put that to the vote, those in favour, please raise your hand, thank you, it's unanimous. No, I'll put that to the vote, those in favor please raise your hand, thank you, it's unanimous. And ho, 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 Merry Christmas. Uh, we now move on to the Economic and Industry Development Committee, and I'll ask, uh, Councilor.
Uh, I would like.
Would you like to move there?
To move both recommendations separately, because one is dealing with a, a large sum of money and the other is electing a council representative on a group.
Thank you. So both, both items will move on to that, the sort of them, that is the Council of May's Southeast Queensland twenty twenty, twenty twenty one membership, and that is for a hundred and seventeen thousand dollars, um, and a hundred and eighty-eight dollars and fourteen cents. Um, and also that for Councilor Johnic to be the, um, Economic and Industry Development Committee member for this council and the Economic Development Working Group for, for COMSEC. So I'll ask for a mover. Council Fekner, and a second, uh, Council Doyle, thank you. I'll now open up for discussion. Council Johnic?
New chair, um, I just wanted to, um, make note that the membership sum is a hundred and seventeen thousand dollars. So we, as a committee, looked into that, we didn't pass, um, our recommendations lightly. The, uh, the Southeast Queensland Council of May's consists of eleven local Southeast Queensland councils. Um, and it has regionally significant initiatives that are important to our council, I believe. Um, so just wanted to put it out there that it wasn't, um, something ticked and flicked. Basically, we, we did, um, consider it.
Thank you, Council Johnic, I concur. Any other discussion? On A or B?
And just on B, I was, um, nominated, um, as part of that working group. Um, focused on key challenges and opportunities that influence the Southeast Queensland economy. And I feel that I would suit the role, being the chair of, um, the Economic and Industry Development Committee as well and, um, a regional, um, role will fit nicely into my local role. And I'm, uh, very excited to be part of that group, uh, and I, um, I thank you for your support.
So I'll just, nothing, what you said, I'm just going to.
It's not, you might as well disclose it.
Okay. Uh, at the last minute, I also made the disclosure that in my role as, as the mayor, um, that I'm a director of COMSEC, that's pa- and under the, the provisions and rules, uh, legislation, um, it's not deemed a conflict of interest if it's something that you have to do as part of, part of your job as well, so I'll just disclose that again. So, thank you. If there's no other discussion, I'll put that to the vote, those in favor. Thank you, it's unanimous, thank you. We'll now go to that second item, which is the Small Business Funding Programme. Two items there, may I have a mover please? Council Fekner, thank you very much, and Council Madson for the second. Thank you. I'll leave that open to discussion.
So through you chair, again, something that I'm really excited about. Get excited about, um, accounting stuff, sorry, everyone. Um, the, the first round of the Small Business Funding Pro- Programme that the council rolled out, um, was in a way underutilized, we allocated two hundred thousand dollars to it and, uh, we learnt a lot from the first round based on what people needed during COVID nineteen for our small businesses and, uh, how they will apply for the money moving forward. Uh, so I'm pleased to announce that the second round will be initiated on the first of October. Um, and we're doing everything that we can, uh, as a council in the economic development team to, um, bring as much needed relief, uh, to our small businesses, uh, during the COVID nineteen pandemic, so.
Has the grant stayed the same, is round two the same as round one, or is, is round one, or has it changed a little bit?
Same amount, so it's a thousand, up to a thousand dollars, um, uh, and it's a little bit different in relation to, um, your reduction in turnover, so a lot of the other grants had, um, a thirty percent reduced, um, turnover to qualify, whereas ours is a twenty percent reduction. Now, um, uh, form to, uh, receive the grant is, uh, a lot easier to apply and, and we'll do the hard work for you as well if you need assistance with filling that out. So we basically want to stimulate, um, our cities', uh, small businesses as much as we can and as quickly as we can. Um, and we're using the feedback from the first round to make our second round more effective.
Okay, that's right. Thank you, thank you for that report. I'll open up for any other discussion?
Uh, Mayor.
Council Madson?
I'd just add that in last week's discussion on this matter, it was discussed how humbling it was for, um, officers and the council with the program, because there are a number of eligible businesses that didn't want to apply because they thought that there were, uh, other businesses in Ipswich in greater need, and I just think that that's wonderful.
Hmm, no, thank you for highlighting that, that was actually to the, um, businesses who did put, put, they didn't go to the, the maximum, the thousand dollars they were applying for, for less because they didn't want to use up all the money, so thank you, Council Madson. Anything else for discussion? Okay, so put that to the vote, those in favor please raise your hand, and it's unanimous, thank you. Well, now we'll go on to the Environment Sustainability Committee Report, and I'll go to the, the chair, I guess, um, I'll have a, to see how you want this reported, any, any batched or, or each one together, each one, sorry, on its own?
Uh, thank you, Mayor, uh, there's only two items and, uh, considering that, uh, they're, they're very distinct, uh, I thought that, um, I, I would leave them as, as separate, um, for, uh, members of the ordering meeting to be able to have discussion i- in those.
Thank you, we'll move on to the State Emergency Service Support Policy, may I have a mover please? Council Milligan, thank you, and a second, uh, if you will, thank you very much. Uh, do we have any discussion or questions of council officers?
Mayor, I, I may add in and, uh, just state that, uh, uh, Emergency Management Sustainability Manager, Mr Pinder gave, uh, the committee a, uh, very detailed explanation of the, uh, the matters and that, uh, the, the, he left us with no doubt, uh, whatsoever in, uh, what was, uh, the situation. Um, and if any members of the, of, uh, the ordering meeting wanted to, uh, ask any specific questions.
I think for me, it was really, I was surprised at how much it was funded by local government, I thought being a state emergency service, it was primarily funded by, by states. So I appreciate the report coming through, and I guess when we go through our budget deliberations. Um, and do note that obviously that it is something a bit, um, contextual, that, that part of this, this, um, report is for us to support and advocate for legislative review with, with the state government to, to improve things, I guess. Or what was the report in two thousand and thirty, um, the sustaining the unsustainable report that was in the, in there. Um, but it was also great to hear from Mr Pinder that, that the ECS here, the, the five units out here are well resourced and ready for the upcoming, uh, storm season as well. Any other discussion? I'll move that one to the vote, those in favor please raise your hand, it's unanimous, thank you very much. We'll now go on to the next item, which is the Franklin Vale Creek Catchment Initiative, partnered with Griffith University and Australian River Institute. May I have a mover please? Council Milligan, thank you very much, seconder?
What are we seconding, sorry?
Uh, Franklin Vale Creek Catchment Initiative.
All recommendations A, B and C, or?
I was putting forward, yes, recommendations A, B and C.
Mm-hmm.
Um, unless someone would like to break those up, then I'll have to.
No, I'll, I'll move that.
Sorry, Council Fekner, would you like to?
I'll second that, sorry, yep.
Second you, uh, thank you. Okay, I'll leave that open for discussion.
Uh, Mayor, I, I'd just like to take the opportunity and reiterate, uh, words earlier spoken, that, uh, we didn't, uh, go through this as a ticket flick, uh, and just, uh, put it, uh, straight through. That also it's, um, a procurement matter where the, uh, university, uh, being, uh, with it being a specialized, uh, requirement, uh, that there really is only one, um, available.
Uh, thank you for bringing that, because obviously, um, it didn't go, this, this is asking us not to go to tender, um, to go directly to this organisation, uh, and the report lays out the, the reasons for that. And it being a, a, a contract of the value of up to a hundred and two thousand seven hundred dollars as well. Okay, any other discussion? No, in that case, I'll put that to the vote, those in favor please raise your hand, it's unanimous, thank you. We now get to item, uh, fourteen point six, which is the Central, Ipswich Central redevelopment committee. Now that we have a report through us, I'll ask the, the chair of that, Deputy Mayor, if she could, sorry, I'll wait for, Council Madson, Council Fekner, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor, I would like to move that we accept items one through to, uh, four and that we discuss item five. And note, obviously, that we are discussing item six, that was.
Okay, so we're saying that we'll batch items one, which is the CBD Civic Car Park Strategy, uh, to the Ipswich Central Executive Report, uh, through the Retail Subproject Steering Committee and the Ipswich Central Community Safety Strategy, we'll batch those together, is your idea? May I have a seconder for that?
I'll second it.
Thank you, Council Kunsman. I'll now open that for any discussion. They're being done, I'll put it to the vote, those in favor, it's unanimous, thank you very much. We'll move on to item five, which I think is a pretty exciting one, uh, which is the Naming of Your Places and Spaces Community Engagement Report. Deputy Mayor, would you like to lead on, um, or, so I should ask for a mover first, sorry? A mover for this report?
I'll move.
Council Doyle, thank you, and Council Kunsman. Thank you, now I'll move open for discussion.
So the first recommendation, um.
My apologies if you may, I just, the CEO, I'd like to say something.
Sorry, I, I was just kind of.
I mean, doing this with the council.
With the staff, yeah, no, the, the naming, the staff report.
The staff report? Yeah, the staff are going to speak to.
There's a staff report later in the agenda, that's all.
Yes.
So, yeah, I was just wondering whether we're going to handle them together?
Yeah, yeah.
Or handle them separately?
Yeah, okay, thank you.
I think together.
Yep, together, so should we, will we just not hold this off until we, to, to just, so that we can have the entire council here to discuss it?
If you wish, yeah, so that would now conflict some interest in the name.
That's right, so that's just a procedural motion, or that's a motion to a?
Well, you just note this, you remove this matter and then deal with the, the staff report.
Okay, you okay with that, uh, I'll just check with Council Doyle, if we note this report and then when we go to it later, it's not, after the end.
Fifteen four.
Uh, fifteen four, we'll then do that with the full council, who do?
Agreed, Mayor.
Okay, in that case, what we're putting forward, um, I asked for a vote to see that we just note that report and I also note the fact that we'll, it is an item for fifteen four for the entire ordinary committee. Those in favor please raise your hand, it's unanimous, thank you very much. We move on to item six of that particular committee, which is the Heritage Considerations for CBD redevelopment. Yep, um, this particular paper is the, in, in exact same, I think it's item number fifteen. Fifteen point three, I think, for later on in this meeting. So may I have a mover for that report, please? Thank you, Council Doyle. And a second, uh, Council Johnic, thank you very much. So we're moving that this be noted, that, that this, this report be noted, then we'll be discussing it later at fifteen point three. I'll open up for discussion. In that case, we'll, we'll, uh, take a vote, those in favor, please raise your hand. I think it's your nerves. Okay, we now ca- call for Council Madson, Council Fekner to come back to the room. Thank you, I note that fifteen point one, the appointment has been dealt with, we're now on to fifteen point two, uh, inland rail. May I have someone move this report, please? Council Kunsman, thank you very much, and a second, uh, Council Fekner, thank you. May I have the relevant council officer come to the stand, please?
Um, good morning, Mayor and councillors, um, I'm Mary Torres of the Infrastructure's Planning, uh, Strategy and Planning Manager from the Infrastructure and Environment Department.
Because is this, have a lot of confidential documents, which when I went through, didn't look that confidential. Uh, but what is this basic, um, what is this report asking for?
So, um, the intent of this report is, um, regarding the inland rail project. Um, and it's a proposal for council to enter in an agreement with Australian Rail Track, um, Corporation. So the agreement is to enable council to, um, review the project designs in relation to how the project will impact on council's assets.
Okay, will it cost the council anything, will it cost the rate payers at Ipswich anything?
N- no, it will not.
And the confidential papers, I can see, uh, the, they're, they're the insisted sort of inland rail, they weren't council putting the commercial confidence on them.
That's correct, yes.
Any other questions? Thank you, Doris, thanks.
Sorry.
Oh, sorry, Council Madson, sorry.
Um, what capacity does council have to represent residents in this, in, in this respect with inland rail? Are we seeking for them to represent themselves directly through the coordinated general process, or?
Uh, they, they are able to do that, um, on, on, they can come to us. However, I suppose the project is a federal, uh, government project and, um, I suppose inland rail would prefer that they go to them directly, but they can come to council if they do have any concerns and we can, um, address those as much as we can.
Thank you.
Yeah, a- and if I might comment, um, this is about direct, directly being, um, compensated for the costs of us assessing what impacts might be on our infrastructure, as you can imagine, the drainage and, and road and other infrastructure that we own that may be impacted. Um, the council may choose at some point through this process to, to make a, a submission that's outside that in relation to broader community matters, um, that this wouldn't stop us doing that, but this is relates to.
Yep.
The impacts of our infrastructure, where we might truncate a road or things like that.
Thank you, Mr Mas.
Thank you.
And I'll open it for discussion.
Well, yeah, I would just add that I was aware that that's not what the confidential papers are about and just, there's a lot of strong community sentiment along the proposed rail corridor regarding the possible floodline impacts and noise and everything, and this isn't councils, this isn't the, the way that we're going to put that forward, but I think it's important for us to communicate how we're going to ensure that our community is represented.
I know it was certainly had, uh, obviously it's going through Division One, um, the residents of Grand Chesa, but also around Ivory Rock. They've also talked about it, I think it would be really good for inland rail to do, um, community briefing sessions, I know it's COVID but, yeah, i- in, in Ipswich itself, I know they've had one in Grand Chesa, according to my knowledge, that's the only one they've done in Ipswich. I, I'm happy to stand corrected, but, um, I think they really need to involve people of Ipswich but also to see the, um, what opportunities there are for us here as well, I think we really, especially to see what jobs there are and what o- opportunities there are for local businesses as well.
Yeah, I would, I would just add that I'm aware that there are a number of community members on the Calvert to Kaguru,
Hmm.
Um, Consultative Committee and then the Kaguru to Heliden. Uh, Consultative Committee, but there are still community members that have reached out to councillor Island, councillor Kunsman, councillor Milligan and myself that aren't really, that, that, there's a degree of uncertainty about what the process is going forward with the project.
So this council obviously, you know, sent an invitation. So this council obviously you sent an invitation out to inland rail to come and to to brief us and we've certainly given them the feedback that um the community need to be consulted as well. And also that we want to see what the um economic opportunities are for us as well here in Ipswich. So we look look forward to that happening. There's no other discussion. I'll put that to the vote, those in favour, please raise your hand, thank you, that's unanimous. We now move on to item fifteen point three.
Mm-hmm.
Which is the heritage considerations for CBD redevelopment. May I have a mover, please, Council Doyle, thank you very much, may I have a seconda, Council Fegner, thank you very much. Would anyone like to bring the relevant council officer, or they're happy to go straight to discussion?
Relevant council officer.
Thank you very much. All right, would you like to introduce yourself when you're talking, please?
Thank you, Mayor Harding, councillors, um I'm Danny Keane and I'm the Principal Officer for Heritage Conservation and Urban Design. And I apologise for missing the previous meeting, but I was quite ill and waiting a um the outcome of a COVID test, which was negative thankfully, so.
Thank you for doing that. Would you like to give us just a brief outline on of this report?
Okay, right here, yeah, the this rep- um the the development of the CBD um has been going on for some time, as we know. It was under two, it's been under two different ownership management structures. The first um structure was under Ipswich Properties, I am in the um city design, which is branch, which is part of um planning and regulatory services. So I was on the development assessment side, so in terms of my involvement in the actual design of the building, those sorts of things, um was was minimal. I was briefed uh irregularly, I guess, and asked for comments on things. Um and it wasn't until the, um so my role in during that period was just basically looking at um how it um the proposal uh aligned with the development approval that was given, which was fairly basic at that particular time. It didn't really give any designs, it was setbacks, heights, those sorts of things from in there. Um under the um the new structure, I'm now on the um the technical working group under Sean Madigan's um chairmanship. And um with that, it was decided that my role would be better placed in the council advice side rather than the development assessment side, which has um been quite good in 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 that respect. But lots of horses have bolted on that particular case, we've um put forward a few um uh suggestions, I guess, in terms of the public art and the heritage. Um in the particular sections of um the the Nicholas Street. Now we have to remember that a lot of um the actual physical heritage of um the CBD was was demolished in the mid nineteen eighties. So we have a a few buildings, strategic buildings placed um in the the redevelopment area itself, including the Commonwealth Hotel, which I played quite a major role in terms of doing the the identification of what was significant. Um those sorts of things, what could be demolished in terms of then um handing it over to, or or I was also then in the approval stage for the process of um the deconstruction of it. And now I'm I'm now um made myself s- uh go to, or I've asked to go to all of the meetings with the constructor, the buil- the company built who are doing it, who um I have a lot of confidence in. They've just come off um doing conservation works for Noldham House in in Brisbane and things in there. So um I'm quite satisfied with that initially, that we were only looking at six months for that building to be in that that state and it sort of was two years. And so we're quite happy that um it hasn't weathered too badly under that. So um and that brings us to the last, um I guess, I don't know how long that committee's been coming out of Sean, but but we, a year. Um that um the 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 major sort of components, I guess, that we've tried to put in have been basically um uh items, public art items, I guess, in terms of the um. Uh the Castan Ballustrade for the Nicholas Street Bridge, the former railway bridge in there, which was um um we'd, Tanya Jen, who's our heritage coordinator, had kept her eye on for many years as to where it was. Um so that was quite exciting, we put forward um a proposal to, uh we we, there was a bit where it could actually go into the line of where where it was, the ballustrade. Um that um came up with some aesthetic um objections to it and we've we've come down to a smaller, smaller um section there and and the staunchings. My belief is that when um the the opportunity may still be there for it to go back into where it was, which is on the other side of the street, once the thing's been built and those sorts of things in in there. I think in terms of um when we look at the the CBD redevelopment of the Nicholas Street redevelopment and the overall CBD, it divides itself into two separate sort of sections. There's a new bit where um you know, we've lost all of the um, or a majority anyway, of the heritage buildings, um but it still has a lot of social significance. And it's very hard with, um and social significance now is is really more of the, is 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 having more importance in um heritage field. Um and it's difficult when you don't have the buildings to hang the social heritage, the social significance on, and that's the case of the CBD. So the the redevelopment bit, so we were, we've been working with um um economic development and and promotion and publicity and Joe Jordan and and Erin Marchant. In terms of getting programmes up and running that that will rebuild that sort of significance of what was lost and the social importance of the rail and the CBD, those sorts of things. And then we've got the other bit, which is where we still do have the heritage buildings in the corner of Nicholas and Brisbane Street, that are pubs that are privately owned, as well as our publicly owned um buildings with it next to the old town hall, the art gallery and those sorts of things. Which offers an opportunity for um horrible word, but an authentic heritage experience that we've got there. We've had some um initial discussions with the owners of the buildings, build, excuse me, buildings on um Nolan's Corner. Um that are all have been in families for several generations and they they love them. At the back of those buildings are a couple of laneways, it's very exciting in terms of nothing's really been done for a very long time at the back of those things. So there's an opportunity there as well as with council's assets to create a sort of, another terrible phrase, a heritage quarter, which will be quite separate too. But um could promote a different type of experience within the city itself. So I think that's a quite an exciting um opportunity that potentially we could do public-private partnerships or whatever, I'm not quite sure. They don't have a great deal of cash, but they were, they're willing to put some, put some of their own funding in, if council give them seed funding, we could then, they could then have a a master plan as to the milestones, as to when they could do work, open things up, that sort of stuff from there. So that's the other thing. In terms of also what could be done now, immediately in the um in the CBD or the Nicholas Street redevelopment, there are two things that I pointed out in the report. Firstly, for um you know, the Blackall Memorial, which is a column up on Chelmsford Avenue near the near the hospital, was originally at the intersection of Brisbane and Nicholas Street. Down there, um it was moved in the middle of last century for traffic reasons, because it was in sort of in the middle of the road. But it was also a place where people met, those sorts of things, it's a beautiful monument, council looked after it very nicely. Um it's my understanding that when the Darcy Doyle Place was built, footings to put it back in there were placed in there. Um my proposal would be that if we could move that back down, it's actually been on the hill longer than it was in the street. But I mean, I think I think in terms of it's a ready-made piece of um, you know, oomph, I think for um for that, for for Nicholas Street, that particular area can sort of also help mark the um. Um that sort of heritage quarter that we could talk about, I think it's great, bring it back. Blackall um was the governor when Ipswich was was first um surveyed and um things, so he, I don't think he played a great role in Ipswich. But um we do have a monument to him and the, I think he's responsible for our narrow streets as well. That, um there's that one, there's also another opportunity down on the riverbank with the um the old pylons for, on the southern bank, um for the old traffic bridge. It's a very nice sandstone, rusticated sandstone um bridge abutment that's at the same level as um the Bradfield Bridge. Um there could be some linkage out onto that or something, but you know, um if it's unused at the minute, unused heritage items tend to not be maintained or repaired and those sorts of things, so forgotten about. So that that's a sort of major heritage element down there that helps explain where we had, there were, you know, two bridges or three, two bridges there. Um there was the, there was the the rail bridge as well as a vehicular bridge. So it's that interpretation um of how the um how visually the CBD has changed over, over from, you know, from even from my lifetime. Um so that's um where we are, we have also added in rather cheekily, I think, our um Ipswich Heritage Programme, um just to show that we're we're, what we get involved in in terms of just right across council. There are only two of us in the, in our pod, as we call it. Um so we have to um uh uh co- uh cooperate with many right across council, you know, in terms of things. We have, I I get called up by um guys working on the roads about finding things, those sorts of things.
So Mr. Keen, how do um residents contact you, if they've got some, you know, we often get uh asked by residents about parts of our history and heritage. What's the best way for residents to to let council know of potentially relevant?
I guess there are two things, the library is probably the best in terms of information, the library, um there's the um picture Ipswich, it's Melanie Rush. Um they have a lot of research that that's done, we have some research done on um Schedule Two places, those sorts of things, they can, they can also contact us. Um so uh.
Yeah.
Sorry, Mr. Keen, um are you, are you um available to speak with residents as well, obviously?
Oh, yes, I do that, yeah, I do that all the time.
Uh your details were on the facade improvement programme recently.
Yes, they're also, um my name, I'm also the heritage advisor for council as well, so my number is is on the, it's on the website, yes.
Yes. Okay, so people could let you know, so that's what I was looking at, if people could let us know.
Yes, sorry.
Like a council to you. Um with all your experience, Mr. Keen, um how is Ipswich Place in South East Queensland, Queensland, I guess in Australia, as I guess is a heritage destination, a tourism destination?
Our heritage programme is, sorry.
As a precinct, I guess, yeah.
Yeah, um extremely high, um in terms of our heritage programme predates state heritage legislation from John Adams and and Garth Moore, putting in their um demolition controls that we had, which predated um both Brisbane and um the state legislation. The state consult, state heritage consults us regularly about what we're doing, um in terms of innova- innovation, those sorts of things. Um they will pass us with, um pass by us changes to legislation, those sorts of things for us to do it. We've trialled um some, um there's some new um uh guidelines for local government in identification of heritage, those sorts of things, we've trialled that for them as well. Um and then just anecdotally, um where uh people, if we're visitors to Brisbane, um if they want to, if they want to see old houses, they're generally told to go to Ipswich. Um the um our heritage, we're quite proud of our heritage programme, I work quite hard in development assessment in terms of getting good outcomes. I'm happy to say that our character areas are actually looking better as as more money is put into them, as opposed to Brisbane, I live in New Farm, where it just gradually gets ugier and ugier and ugier as time goes by.
Thank you, Mr. Keen.
So we have an excellent programme.
All right, yes.
Yes, uh um through the chair, um Mr. Keen, and I just want to take the opportunity to um thank you for your love and and passion of the heritage here in Ipswich. I've had um the opportunity of um meeting with you um since joining council and learning um your your knowledge and um experience is exceptional. And I I love and share your passion of um the heritage um elements of our CBD. Um like you, I'm extremely disappointed that um those previously involved with the the design of of the new section of of um. Uh the Nicholas Street precinct, including the new council administration building, didn't take the opportunity to incorporate where possible as much of the heritage design features that they could. Um there's so many examples in Queensland, particularly South East Queensland, where architects have worked with old buildings and and new sections um marry very well with with old old buildings. The old meets new works perfectly, so like you, I'm disappointed. Um but um hopefully we can explore the opportunities, as you've mentioned about including the Nicholas Street, um ballustrades and staunchings. Um.
Hmm.
Throughout the development, um I'm glad that you're watching and looking for those opportunities very closely. Could I just ask you one question, your view, please, as we are considering naming um uh the different um places within um the C- the CBD. Um we've sought community consultation and feedback, one of the precincts we have to name is what's currently known as the Nicholas Street precinct. Now, that's the 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 precinct um that incorporates the civic space, the new council administration building, the old mall, I guess, which is known, I think, as um Mr. Farmer Ipswich.
S- s- still currently called Ipswich City Mall and Union Place Mall.
Okay, so as we go through and name all these various places, we will still have the Nicholas Street precinct, which it's currently called. Do you see any value in retaining Ni- Nicholas Street as the name of the precinct? When we talk about preserving the the heritage significance, where we may have lost a building, it's an opportunity via RNA.
Yeah, the, we've done a bit of research into um why it was called Nicholas Street and we don't know. It, when Wade's initial survey was done in eighteen forty, late eighteen forties, I think, um for Ipswich, it was called Nicholas Street. So we have no idea, it might have been his son or or who knows, um we don't know why it was called Nicholas Street, it was just that was when it, that's the name it was called when it was first surveyed in the eighteen forties, early eighteen fifties. So um other than a um the fact that it's always been called Nicholas Street, um um there's no real historical basis for that, for for the name. So it means nothing to, it's not in honour of anyone associated with the city. So um I think the 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 street could be, remain Nicholas Street, because I think it's a sort of the the social history of it. But the area, I mean, the civic space and those sorts of areas, I think probably requires a a local name. If that's, that's my, probably a personal opinion more than a professional one, but other than the the fact that um there there's no known basis of why it's called Nicholas Street.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? No, I just want to thank you for your hands-on approach to the the Commonwealth Hotel, it's nice to hear the fact that you've following through the the, making sure the conservation and then the reconstruction, that it's good to know.
Right. Yes. Okay, great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I open this up for discussion. I guess this report is just asking us to note it and I do note, um when we put the Blackall Memorial, um there's a Facebook page called Put the Blackall Mon- that Monument Back Where It Belongs. Um so there's, there says we some community feedback on on where things should go, especially the footings that were already there.
Um thank you Mayor, um yes, obviously there's a lot of um um very passionate um heritage um supporters within our community and they're very vocal and they have some fantastic ideas.
Hmm.
And the uh Blackall Monument, um it's been talked about for quite some time about returning it to Darcy Doyle Place. So it's comforting to know that the footings uh are still there and absolutely um want to follow up, um to explore um that option. Uh a- as well as the the ballustrades and and the staunchings, um noting the social importance of of the um rail.
Hmm.
Uh industry in Ipswich, I think it's an important opportunity that we get right what we do with the ballustrades.
Yeah.
Um sadly, they've they've been known about and talked about for years, but nobody's ever done anything with them, so I'm determined that we will be doing something, um.
I'm wondering whether, Deputy Mayor, whether we um do a, an amendment to this, just although we're noting it, whether, do we wish to workshop, I know we discussed at briefings about the heritage. Do we wish to have a workshop, how we can put more heritage into the CBD or do we wish, or or will we live it to go through the CBD redevelopment?
I think the CBD redevelopment, and 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 they say, and and I'm open for the councillors to, you know, express their view, but the majority of us, I think, are on the CBD redevelopment committee and if there's a.
Yeah. Okay. Any other discussion on this?
I'm just bringing up, is there, it it's great that we want to do it and I think the reason we didn't bring the Blackall Memorial down was cost. Is there an idea of what all this is going to cost us on top of what we're doing?
Through the man, yeah, through the man, no, it's very early stages, this has just been um a lot of um discussion in the community and Mr. Keen has just brought to our attention. and Mr Keenan has just brought to our attention that the foundations are still there. So um we will absolutely be following up um the costings on that. I can see uh our CEO, David Farmer, um looking at me as we were discussing that. So absolutely, councillor, we, we need to talk about the cost and.
Re- relocating monuments uh is not inexpensive. Um, but many monuments in many cities have been moved for reasons, et cetera. So, you know, at some point the council might wish to, to one, you know, assess the cost and then do some community consultation on, on what it wants to do in that space. But there's probably a little bit more work to be done between now and making that call.
Oh, absolutely, absolutely. Um, commercial decision will probably need to be made whether or not it is absolutely worthwhile. And, and the same would apply to um Mayor the Ballastrades and, and Staunions. You know, we have some fantastic ideas um to incorporate them, you know, as part of an experience of train spotting, acknowledging our, our importance in rail. But um we don't have endless monies in the budget. So it's obviously all cost constraints.
The cost of restoring the oomph.
Sorry, I couldn't hear that. Councillor, you? I couldn't hear that.
Councill-
I just commented that, that there's a cost to restoring the oomph.
Yes.
As was referred to before.
Okay. The oomph.
Councillor Milligan, I would be um prepared if, if you would be to join me. I will get the steel wall and, and we can strip those Ballastrades together.
More than happy.
Thank you. Any other discussion? No, in that case I'll put this uh recommendation, this report to the, those in favour to note it, please raise your hand. If you're nervous. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr Keenan. Now move on to fifteen point four, which is the naming of your places and spaces, the community engagement report. May I have a move up please, councillor?
May I just like to move for a twenty minute adjournment?
Oh, yes, okay. Uh, so procedural motion to put forward that we adjourn, I'm going to ask for a twenty minute adjournment.
Yeah.
Um, means we would come back at ten forty-five. Um, those in favour, please raise your hand. Thank you. We're back at ten forty-five.
Hello. Thank you. It's ten forty six. We are back after recess up to fifteen point four, which is naming of your places and spaces, community engagement report. May I please have a move? I think before we go break, Council Doyle, you will just move it. And a second.
Uh, sorry, we'll need to move a substantive motion, ma'am. So if we'll, are we moving, we'll move them individually.
Well, we can't go into discussion until we've.
You just need to move a substantive motion, someone needs.
Yes. So for A, I move, I would like to move, ma'am. For me, I would like to move that council name the precinct currently referred to as Nicholas Street, uh, Nicholas Street, the Nicholas Street Precinct.
There's a second.
Okay. Do we have a second for that, Council Doyle? Thank you very much.
Okay.
Thank you. So this first one, looking at the council determine the name of the precinct. We are looking at four different areas. We've got the recommendations, um, A, B, C and F from the previous report.
Mm-hmm.
At this stage. Uh, so we'll leave it open. Um, we had community consultation on this and, um, we're looking at, do we call, uh, the Nicholas Street precinct? I don't know. Deputy Mayor, have you got to go into a bit more of what the precinct is and, and.
Thank you very much. Nicholas Street Precinct, I guess, has been the, the name, the marketing, uh, name used to market, um, the, the area known, formerly known as Ipswich City Mall. The, uh, Nicholas Street Precinct is made up of various different spaces, alleys, buildings, including the council's new administration building, the civic space, Ipswich Library. So I, I, I guess, um, we are not talking about the street name, Nicholas Street as such, um, as the CEO, Mr Farmer, spoke to earlier. The, um, the, the postal address, the official address for that strip, um, at, at the, the top of Brisbane Street flying down is known as, um, Ipswich.
City Mall.
City Mall. So I guess the significance of, of naming the precinct is, is purely for
Hmm.
I guess, marketing and, and a, a group or a general term, um, when people are heading to Ipswich to, um, visit one of the spaces or buildings. They will be headed to the Nicholas Street Precinct if, if that's the name given to it.
I guess we'll look at, do we keep it as that or Ipswich City Mall? Or I guess other names that, that, that has been put forward.
Mm-hmm.
And I also note too that there was, there are some issues from our planning, I'm looking at for Mr Tabullo, about, um, who's Nicholas Street's truncated? Would it cons- like, we're just talking about the precinct, not the name of the street itself, is that?
That's correct.
That is correct.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Yeah, there would be a separate decision on whether we wish to rename, rename the property addresses.
Yep.
Um, the truncation isn't a, um, complete, um, habit, what's the word? Prohibition of calling it Nicholas, Nicholas Street, but it's, it's an issue that we'd have to determine with emergency services. And we'd also obviously have to talk to the, the owners of those properties, um, whi- of which we own most of them. But if we were going to change the street name itself, but at this stage, this isn't about changing the name, the physical property addresses.
Through the mayor. Sorry, and I just would like to, um, reiterate what councillor, uh, sorry, what, um, David Farmer, uh, our CEO, ha- has just said. This is just a general term, almost a marketing term, Nicholas Street Precinct. We are not talking about Nicholas Street as such and noting that, um, the vehicular accessory there is, is not called Nicholas Street anyway.
Hmm. Mm-hmm. I think we had sort of twenty two different, um, names that was su- suggested. I think it's interesting looking at the, um, community consultation that, that occurred. Pardon me while I get the exact numbers. I think, um, two thousand nine hundred thirty eight people visited the Shapier Ipswich page on it. We had three hundred and four, uh, contributions and two email submissions. There were, uh, six thousand four hundred five thumbs up given to contributions when people visited. Um, and obviously people continued to stay on and involved in that contribution. So really, to all the people that did go onto Shapier Ipswich and contribute, I want to thank you very much for doing that. And you'll see as we go through our, um, naming here that we are taking that into consideration. I really appreciate it. And thank you for the council team as well for doing that. I guess when we look at Nicholas Street precinct, we also look at, I guess, Brisbane has their Queen Street Mall, Sydney has Pitt Street Mall. Do we follow something the same? Or what, what do you think would be the best marketing name or the best ca- the ca- best name for us commercially, ladies?
So, sorry, through you, ma'am. Um, so I've moved that we do call it the Nicholas Street Precinct. So if anyone wishes to speak against it, I guess that they can, um, do that.
I'm hoping up for discussion.
Yeah.
So if people would like to discuss, um, what they'd like to do, to call it, now's the time to, I'll leave it pretty open. If I think for something this important, I'll leave it pretty open.
Thank you, ma'am. I, I, I note, uh, within the, you know, many suggestions from the, the consultation, we do, um, have several, um, references to our indigenous, uh, people, um, groups, individual names. But I note that, um, that is also, um, a strong contender for the civic space. So, um, and there will be lots of opportunities, as I understand it, to individually name potentially rooms within the library, for instance, um.
Hmm. I think for that one, I think we should be changing it to, to Nicholas Street Precinct. Is that where it should be?
Mm.
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yep. No heated discussion, no.
Uh, I guess with, with matters such as this, we've got to keep a view on our growth and what sort of population we'll have down the, down the line. Um, Ipswich will have a very significant population and it would be my expectation that this would be the major commercial centre for our city. You know, fifteen to twenty years from now. So I think in light of your comments about Queen Street in Brisbane and Pitt Street in Sydney, I think that's pretty, pretty valid here. Um, and I don't think it's an issue, like, we're not naming this until the end of time. If at a later day to council, whether it's us or people many generations later, believe that there's reason to adopt a resolution to name it something else, that's possible. It's, we're not setting anything in stone per se.
I note that our commercial teams, our leasing teams who have been out there in the marketplace for some time have been using the word Nicholas Street. So I know for myself, it's been very front and centre during this, um, COVID times of, of, of having some consistency or that, that type of thing as well. So that's certainly in my, my mind. But the main thing is to get the name right. Council Feigny, would you?
Yeah, I just wish to speak to the practicality of, of keeping it the Nicholas Street Precinct. There's a certain intimacy, uh, that a lot of people involved in this project, uh, have with that particular naming. Uh, and to go against that, uh, being this far into, uh, you know, having marketing material and having referred to it for so long now, it almost seems counterintuitive that we would decide on anything other than Nicholas Street Precinct.
Hmm. Thank you, Beavie. Thank you. There's no other discussion. I'll put that to the vote, that, uh, that the council named the, the precinct currently referred to as Nicholas Street, as the Nicholas Street Precinct. So I'll look around. We have, I'm just going to go around the table because it's not unanimous. Um, so councillor Madison has voted in the favour, councillor Feigny, councillor Doyle, councillor Milligan, councillor Johnick, councillor Ireland and councillor Conselman, thank you very much. Those against? Councillor Tully votes against. And so it's carried. Thank you very much. We'll now move on to the next part, which is the, uh, the council determine the name for the civic space. Would someone like to move the suspended name, councillor Pika?
Yeah, I would, I would like to move that council name the civic space Toma.
Second.
Toma, Toma or Toma Place?
Uh, Toma Place.
Yeah.
Toma Place.
And your second, ma'am?
And your second, ma'am?
Yeah.
Thank you very much. I'll now open that up for discussion. Councillor Feigny?
Um, a lot of work went into, um, really pointing at the word Toma. Uh, there was a, there was a big engagement piece, um, that council ran, uh, before we were sworn in.
Hmm.
Um, around, uh, you know, how do we include our first peoples in the conversation, uh, when it comes to naming places in a really important part, um, of our city? Um, particularly, uh, because we're, it is a huge investment, uh, for council and the ratepayers. Um, so I just want to commend that consultation. Uh, and the outcome of that, uh, pointed specifically to the name, uh, Toma Place. So I wholeheartedly, um, endorse, uh, the work that they did. And all of the consultation that led to, um, that singular word, uh, for Ipswich. And I think that it has a wonderful ring to it. So I'm happy to endorse.
Thank you, councillor.
Oh, um, Mayor Harding, I, um, would also, um, like to express my, uh, support for, for using of, of the word Toma. And, um, noting, um, that various, um, council offers, officers, um, uh, as, as well as yourself, have gone to great lengths to seek expert, um, advice and confirmation on the use of, of the word Toma. And I know we've, we've received confirmation from one of the language experts, um, at Queensland Museums, um, that, that Toma does represent, um, the views of, of several different, um, indigenous groups, um, across Ipswich.
Yeah. Thank you, councillor Doyle. Thank you. Any other discussion on the civic space being called Toma Place? Now, I'll put that to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. Look around. It is unanimous. Thank you very much. We move on to the next one, which is council determine the name for the new library. Now I have someone put a name forward.
Mayor, I would like to, uh, recommend, uh, that council name the new library, the Ipswich Central Library.
Thank you. May I have a second for that?
Of course.
Thank you, councillor Conselman. Thank you very much. I'll now open that up for discussion. Councillor Feigny?
Uh, just in terms of branding and consistency once more, it's very practical for us to choose a name like the Ipswich Central Library, uh, because it's really in keeping with our library's brand, uh, across the city. And I think that it's really important to maintain that. Uh, not only from a branding perspective, but from a navigational perspective, if you're looking to go to the library, uh, you know, probably one of the most obvious searches that you would put into your nav or into Google or any other search engine for that matter, would be the Ipswich Central Library. Uh, so I think that, um, it has great wayfinding potential, um, and it's a really practical, um, application of the name that fits very nicely, uh, into the library's brand that we've current, that we've already established here within the organisation.
Thank you.
Mayor Harding, uh, my understanding, um, is that, um, council staff, Ipswich Library's staff, um, have confirmed that t- to the, the use of the name Ipswich Central Library from a practical and operational point of view is something that they support.
Hmm. Yep. It certainly would fit in with the Springfield Central, Rosewood, you know.
Mm-hmm.
Hmm.
Very. Like, it sort of fit, it sort of fits in with the, the naming that we currently have.
It's unambiguous.
Yes.
Unambiguous. Unambiguous.
Unambiguous. Clear.
Yeah. Sorry.
Any other discussion points? I'll put, uh, Ipswich Central Library to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. Thank you. It's unanimous.
But it's, F is not F. It's, F is actually D. It's about the unnamed lane.
F. Okay. Thank you. So next we'll go to, um, D or F in the report. That council determine the name for the event space located on, actually I think we're looking at that line.
No.
Sorry, I want to change that.
We're not, we're looking to the unnamed lane colloquially known as Bottle Alley.
Yes. So I'll have someone move, we'll change, we'll change that. Yes, when I've come out.
Oh, sorry.
And so councillor Conselman says she'll move that. My second, oh, councillor Milligan, thank you. Change?
Thank you.
So we just might change that to clear if that's the intention.
So it works.
That is the.
I'll I'll open it up for discussion.
Um.
This is probably the surprise of the consultation, I think. Um, it was nearly unanimous, um, with the consultation that, that people wanted Bottle Alley to remain Bottle Alley. I don't know, Deputy Mayor, if you'd like to comment?
Uh, yes, mayor, um, I note that, um, there were a lot, um, of individuals within the community that were, um, a little upset actually that it was up for, um, potentially to be renamed. Um, but it's my understanding it, it hadn't actually been formally, um, named Bottle Alley. It was just known within the community, um, as that. Um, so, and I think the community response, um,
Hmm.
is overwhelmingly in support for retaining the name Bottle Alley.
Hmm. I note in the, the report that, um, that's been referred to as Bottle Alley for over two hundred years. Originally the delivery route to, to the public had been Nicholas Street.
That'd be impossible.
That's what I was going to say. That's what's said in the report here. But obviously that's, that's what someone from the public has, has written in there. With the feedback in this report. So I think what the point, point was that it's been referred to as Bottle Alley for a long time. I think was the, the, uh, sentiment in that remark.
Uh, ma'am.
Yes.
I'd just add that at times there has been some negative perceptions of Bottle Alley, but in, in many respects, I think it's, it's a pretty colourful name. There's a, there's a bit of a story behind it. And if you talk to long-term Ipswich residents and you just say, oh, you know, And if you talk to long-term Ipswich residents and you just say, oh, you know, Bottle Alley, they they know the um the the satellite point on the map straight away. They know what you're referring to.
Yeah.
It's 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 become to be its name.
Thank you. Do you want to speak to the relevant council about some of the changes? I know we did it at the CBD redevelopment, we're happy to proceed.
I'm satisfied with the discussions um so far, but I w- I I would be happy to have the relevant council officers.
From the start, yeah.
Yeah.
Yep.
Uh, Mayor, just so that we're moving a substantive motion, uh because currently it reads that recommendation F for Bottle Alley be determined, that council determines, so um.
My pos- in my report here, it actually says something different for F. It says that council determine the name for event space located on level one of the council admin building. So that's what I've got in my pack.
Yes, so what was intended, sorry, um Mayor, what was intended through the CBD redevelopment committee, um I moved that um recommendation A, B, C and F um
Mm, yeah.
be um a decision be made today. And and in the committee agenda, sorry, CBD redevelopment committee agenda papers, um F was Bottle Alley. I understand that um an error has occurred
Yes.
when preparing today's agenda.
Yeah.
Yes.
So I think I I know the the agenda was packed, sent out and and done. It had a different wording. And I that's what is written up there as F is certainly not what's written in my pack here, so.
Yeah, that I I appreciate that, Mayor. I'm ju- just acknowledging that there's no substantive motion up there to actually rename
Hmm.
uh the the name to rename it. So we're moving that we just make the amendment so that we are actually um going to discuss and and formulate a recommendation based on that.
Okay, yes, okay. I understand what you're saying. Okay.
Uh, so.
So what we're saying, we should change it, that the the council determine the name, Lane Way f- Lane Way Two currently knows Bottle Alley, be Bottle Alley.
Yes, that's exactly what we.
Is that what you're asking, councillor?
Thank you, yes.
Yes, that's exactly what we.
Okay, okay.
Yeah.
That's Bottle Alley. I'll just double check. So councillor Kunsman, you originally moved that? You're satisfied with that amendment? That variation? Yes?
Mm.
Yes.
Uh, councillor Milligan, yes?
Thank you.
And thank you, councillor Fickner.
Yeah. Good pick up.
Any other discussion on Bottle Alley? No, in that case I'll put that to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. It's unanimous. Thank you very much. Now they were the four that we are looking at. Please note that the community consultation did go into um other areas, other zones, which we'll I think workshop and 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 come back to council to discuss, but those four I think are particularly important when it comes to signage and and naming of buildings and getting it ready for for the opening. We now move on to the second last item, which is the fifteen point five, the monthly uh finance and performance report. May I please have a mover for that? Thank you, councillor Johnick. Number second, uh, thank you, deputy mayor. Last relevant council officer. Hello. Could you put your name in your position, please?
Good morning, Mayor Harding, councillors. Uh, my name's Jeff Keach, the Chief Financial Officer. Uh, the report you got before you is again our normal monthly finance report, this time for the period up to the thirty first of August. Um, again, the details in the report in the attachments, just to highlight a couple of points for for your attention. Uh, currently you'll see that the net result uh which is favorable at the moment, approximately four point nine million favorable. That includes things like capital revenue and donated assets. And our operating position is about one point eight million dollars favorable. In relation to the detail, you see their revenue is actually overstated. A lot of that is about a million dollars overstated over over budget and revenue, um primarily in the areas of fees and charges, which is uh in the town planning space. And we've received a couple of larger contributions for double mountains there. And in relation to expenses, we are currently under about eight hundred thousand dollars, a little bit in in employee costs. Uh, as we've mentioned before, that's tight and will probably get tighter as we continue to fill up to our uh head uh workforce. And the workforce review committee is keeping track of those as we move forward. And materials and services is about a million dollars under budget. That's pretty standard for this time of year. You know, you normally normally you have a little bit of timing difference early in the year as programs kick off and move forward. Um, but again, we'll keep an eye on that throughout the year as we report through in relation to any programs in that space. Um, and also then as we move into any levels of budget amendment. The other one I just note there, which is in the report and I've mentioned a couple of times now, is in relation to depreciation. Um, whilst it's a non cash expense, it still does affect the result. Uh, that's over a lot. We've had some uh revaluations in the buildings and other structures, which I've mentioned before, that is impacting it. We are still continuing to do some more analysis into it, leading into any further amendments of the budget in that space. But just noting that that is impacting the result. We also had significant donated assets last year over and above what we would normally have had. And that obviously increases our asset base. In terms of the capital program, um the infrastructure program's on budget there. And there's a timing difference at the moment in relation to the CBD Nicholas Street development. Uh, you'll note there it's about two million dollars behind budget, but we certainly see that as a timing difference. Um, it's just when the program was put together at the time of developing the budget, that's moved a lot over the last couple of months. Um, and that'll be picked up, no doubt about that, as we move through the year. And just the other carrier is cash. And as you'll see in the last graph at the back, the cash is is on target uh to our forecast from there. Happy to take any questions or anything else in relation to the report?
I guess see if uh my concern is is I guess risking COVID.
Yeah.
Are you seeing an impact of 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 COVID on our financial performance?
Um, as you recall, we took um quite a conservative approach in the budget as to what might be the impact of COVID with the level of uncertainty that was there. And at the moment, we're actually tracking slightly in front of that. Um, in p- as I say, primarily because of the position we had in the in um what might happen in the development industry. My thoughts, like all levels of government at the moment, is there's still significant uncertainty out there as to what might occur over the next three to six months. Um, so trying to forecast what might be the position forward is very hard at this stage. And I think it is very much a watching brief for us and council as we move forward. Um, will we stay at that level going forward? It's very hard to determine. It will be depend dependent on a number of factors, including the various stimulus packages that are out there. So at this stage, it'd be too early to make a call whether we're going to continue in this favorable position or whether uh we might find that the impacts across the community still are yet to be fully felt uh in that level of uncertainty.
What planning or what actions are you doing, knowing that Jobkeeper and Jobseeker sort of finish in in March?
Yeah.
What what's we're, I guess what plan are you doing around that?
We're we're keeping an eye on that. I guess some of the discussion for council will be um our support packages, which some of them are uh been through to the end of September. Um, we've provided obviously some of the um exemptions related rates, rates concessions and um and discounts and that. There'll be some discussions, I guess we'll have to have with council as to if those communities start to be impacted by that, whether council wants to continue with any other level of stimulus post what we've currently provided. We're still continuing at the moment with our early payment terms, which I think is having a significant support for businesses in terms of seven day payment terms. That hasn't been changed at the moment, is still continuing, obviously something that can be discussed with council. But we've had some very positive feedback in terms of that supporting small business cash flow in those areas.
Mm-hmm.
Um, but again, I think some of those were through to the end of Sep- September. And again, some of those COVID reliefs, as we see what impacts might happen when Jobkeeper and Seeker drop off, whether council wants to consider anything further going forward.
I appreciate when you're looking at two months of figures.
Two months, yeah. Yeah.
But is anything that's keeping you up at night?
No, not at this stage in time. I think it's very early to see. Um, as I say, mainly, the main area of variance is depreciation. I think at the moment, employee cost is another one, which I think we are seeing some pressures in terms of maintaining service delivery. But just as we as we continue to build up our staff um and monitoring what would normally be, I've spoken to council before about our vacancy rates. You know, we had a budgeted vacancy rate. How that transpires in the current climate will be a watching brief, I think, as we move forward for the executive team. Um, if that doesn't stay, if if we don't have the level of turnover of staff, then yes, we might come under a bit of pressure with employee costs as we move through the year. But we'll bring back that to council on on a monthly basis and also as part of any budget amendments. No, nothing keeping me awake at night. I think, you know, at this stage in time, it's it's sort of on track where we thought and probably slightly ahead of budget in terms of some of those revenue items. Um, it's probably a little bit less unexpected at this stage.
It's good to see the cap exit going to, so that capital works is is continuing on according to the program.
Yes. Yeah, that's very important to keep that going forward as part of our relief. And and capital programs, as you all know, can vary, but to be on target at this time of year is is important. Um, it sets it up very well for for continuing the program throughout the rest of the year.
Any other questions for the CFO?
Just um in relation to the capital program. And I note that the year-to-date budget um for all of the um items are below the forecast except for local amenity. Obviously, that's expected.
Yeah. Yeah, it's 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 th- that's just a very standard line at the moment.
Okay.
It's not it's not phased by the schedules of the programs.
Right.
That's just a a benchmark being, you know, two months out of twelve as a bit of a guide for council. So um overall, you'll get some unders and movements in programs depending on schedule.
Yeah.
Um, but yeah, at this stage in time, I think they're they're reasonably on track for delivery of the capital program at this stage. Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Now I'll open this up for discussion. If there be no discussion, I'll move that this performance, this monthly finance performance report um is accepted. Those in favour, please raise your hand. Thank you, it's unanimous. Last item on the agenda, fifteen point six, Cameron Park, Swift's Leagues Club. And this report is uh is asking for recommending that um that council repeal its previous decision um in regards to considering the possible disposal to Swift's. May I have a mover, please? Councillor Doyle, thank you very much. And a second, uh, thank you, councillor Kunsman. Appreciate that. I have the relevant council officer, who has?
Uh, good morning, Mayor and councillors. Brett McGrath, Property Services Manager.
Yeah, does anyone have any questions of Mr. McGrath? I'll try this. No, so I just anticipated there might be some questions, but obviously um we received a letter from Swift's. We we proceeded down our process for community consultation with Swift's and we received a letter to say that they do not wish to proceed. Is that what's happening?
Yeah, that's right. So following the previous council decision, we drafted a um community consultation scope and plan um which we provided with Swift's and sat down and ran through that with their advising of their requirements and responsibilities as part of the community consultation process. And following that, they um formally advised us on the fourteenth of September that they didn't want to proceed with the purchase of the facility.
And to sustain their lease.
Yep, that's right.
Okay. Any other questions? No, thank you, Mr. McGrath.
Thank you.
I'll go up for discussion. Mayor, deputy mayor.
Mayor, um I I I guess I have um mixed views on on the outcome here. Um, the the feedback consultation um questions I fielded from the community included um several families um who've been involved with the club for years
Mm.
and and currently have children playing there. And I I recall, you know, it stuck in my mind, one of the comments was uh we just want one, we just want uh what the other clubs have,
Mm.
which is a a clubhouse. Um, and and, you know, that really resonated with me. I'm an Ipswich girl and and grew up um having a lot to do with both North End and West End.
Hmm.
So I know the importance of of having their own club. So I was very motivated, um I guess, to see um, you know, all parties explore all options here.
Hmm.
Um, and obviously um what was also important to me um was the views and concerns of um council effectors um and my residents living um around that area. And the feedback I got from residents um seemed to be that um, you know, they have lived with the Swifts um operating um from their, the current footprint for quite some time.
Hmm.
And um business as usual, I guess, wasn't a problem for them going forward.
Hmm.
However, it became very clear there was no appetite um and and no tolerance by the community for for council to potentially sell off a bigger footprint than what Swifts currently occupy. And and absolutely the community were outraged by us potentially carving off some some green space from the park and adding that to the area that Swifts were looking for. Um, I can only, you know, uh guess at the reasons why Swifts have have now decided to not proceed with the purchase.
Hmm.
I I, you know, if if we make, if I make the assumption that it's because it's only the existing footprint that has been offered to them and not the additional land, then in my view, council has done all it can
Hmm.
um partic- in particular, and importantly for the families involved that that were looking um for that club.
Hmm.
But I've um obviously a good outcome for residents, um selling off green space. Um, that's a v- a well-used park. Um, yeah, thank you.
Thank you, councillor. I think and Swift's has obviously been a club that's been around about a hundred years. I understand they've been at that location for for twenty years and they continue to lease that building as as per normal.
Mm-hmm.
So what what is happening there, we'll continue to to work with them as 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 we have, I guess, uh previously. Thank you. Is there any other discussion? In that case, I'll put the matter to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. It's unanimous. Thank you very much. There being no notices of motion or questions on notice, I'll um close the meeting now at eleven eighteen. Thank you very much.